Does he have anything static or kind of template type things um for us to send? And so then we just got talking and he said he had the context for our legislators, he just sent it to both of us. If we want to reach out and.
I think it'd be good if it's not boilerplate, just personal, so that they don't hear the same.
Oh.
You know what I mean?
I do.
I need to reach out to advocate for it.
For the AAs.
Oh, sure. Gotcha.
I know she's working on it.
This text right here.
Yep.
That's what it is.
I got, no, like she's hoping I got just presentation, so I'll pull that up when you're ready to go and just tell them.
Yeah, she's got it.
When it advances or whatever.
I'm sure it'd be like normal.
And if you don't want to, that's fine.
Oh, sure. I mean, I think.
The importance of, yeah, just the importance of AAs.
I was glad she put, she did it.
Support us.
I'll try to stick with.
Actual attraction and.
And I don't feel so.
Go through time and draw.
I just read it through it Sunday. And I said, oh.
Why you say that?
I said to Kevin.
Uh, it seems like a big move.
It's very like, oh, yeah, that's on the agenda, that's public information, so. Yeah.
Flash.
It is, it is.
They forced that.
I love to see.
Right.
They has a.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was like, you're gonna get one of ours and I'm not happy about it and I'm like, well, you'll find somebody, we'll be okay.
So it's the third time having to reschedule media day. Is today the tomorrow? Tomorrow's day too. But they don't wanna do it on. On like Saturday, yeah.
Has a masters in counseling, they could have some people. And be far enough through that they could.
Trying to remember what we had the one year.
Be close, kinda like Gillian did, I mean, she was, you know.
Whenever we rescheduled, we knew we'd have two hour, like starting from school that one year. I'm trying to think what that was, I didn't think it was media day, but it was something like that, like we've rescheduled. I'm not exaggerating. Four or five times. And yeah, last year was tradition, but I think that was. It was challenging.
We're ready.
Yep.
It's going.
Okay, it is five thirty and I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, first item is to approve the agenda. So, okay.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay. Next we'll go through the five school board basics and we're going to do the round robin again like we have been. So I'll start and then I'll pass the ball to you, okay, Jennifer? You're gonna say number two.
Okay. It's not even, mine's still.
Oh, it's up there, just to fall right there, okay. Put students first.
Follow the law and your own policy, respect the chain of command.
Based decisions on shared objective information.
And operate in the public eye. Next we will move to our consent items. And we'll ask if there's a. Motion to approve those.
We gotta, do you have anything to?
There's, there was just a few more bills.
Okay.
So, they're pretty, pretty normal things.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't give them out, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I'm not.
And then addition, just to draw your attention to, as part of the consent agenda, we have uh under resignations, early retirements, one to, one resignation and one early retirement. That you can see on there and then um recommending. We've, this year we're reviewing the one hundred and six hundred, we had done the one hundred series before Christmas. Six hundred series here we are attempting this month. And we are recommending foregoing the second reading and approve the first reading for those policies that didn't have any changes other than we'll review the date that they were last reviewed on.
Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, agenda items as presented.
Okay.
Thanks.
Did, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, is there any discussion, further discussion on that, okay? Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, those are passed. It is now time for visitors, we have two tonight, uh, Jordan Jeffrey. Oh, we have three?
No.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If, Jordan, if you wanna come up first.
Where should I present?
You can stand right there, it's fine.
Awesome.
You will have, you'll have three minutes to present and we'll let you know if you run into that time, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, good evening, my name is Jordan Jeffrey, I'm youth pastor here in Sibley. I want to thank you for your time tonight. I personally want to thank you for the ways that you lead our school and our students. With that, I also have some concerns that I'd like to bring to your, to your attention. The first concern I have is that from talking with students and observations that I have observed is that they have a lot of homework on Wednesdays with assignments that are due on Thursdays. I understand the need for education, however, the early dismissal is supposed to be for the church night. I would like to propose that practices are also shortened on Wednesdays, that is banned and sports practice as well. Students go from school to practice to church, back to home, and that is a very long day for them. Which gives me with my second, second concern, with our students' ment- mental health. Our students have a lot on their plates and other extracurricular activities. How can we work on a good work-life balance for students? And I'm afraid that our students are being stretched too, too much. Which leads to my last concern here, is with our curriculum with regards to science. Um, I was worried and would like to see that the, our science curriculum includes intelligent design as a theory. Students should be informed and taught the, the possible ways that earth and humans come into existence from a intelligent design point of view. And I'll end with this, studies have shown the importance the church has in a student life. And I'm thankful for the partnership that school and church have. And I really appreciate your time tonight and hearing these concerns, I hope that as a school board we can see some changes happen with our school system to help our students with their work-life balance, so thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay, Josh Lucas?
Hi, my name is Josh Lucas and I am also a youth pastor here in Sibley. I'm here today to first thank you, but to say thank you to the school board. Your job I, I imagine is not an easy one. And yet I do feel that you have done a pretty good job of representing the students, parents, educators, and educational standards here in Iowa. With that being said, I am not here to point blame at any one person, however, I as a youth pastor or director have seen high school and middle school students at very low points in their lives. I have grown to become concerned for the well-being of our students, whether it be mental health or even physical health. I have been in this community for almost seven years and I have been through a lot with this school and this community. I have actually sat in this very room uh through two student suicides, I have been in these offices talking with counselors and teachers. I am concerned about the mental health of the students who feel overwhelmed by the amount of homework that is given to them. I've heard the statement being made, we are preparing them for college. I went to college, I have friends who were not in Bible college. And we did not have this amount of homework that these students seem to have. One thing I would like to see investigated or at least looked into is it seems that there is a large amount of homework that is handed out on Wednesday night. Or I have noticed that students cannot be a part of Wednesday night youth group because they have a test the next morning on Thursdays. I went to a public school, I was in the system, I was, I was a part of a public school system. And I was never given a test on a Thursday. Everything was due and tests were done on Fridays. Just something to think about. Religion is something that is very important and students need, um. There is also a big push for students to be heavily involved in sports. Which there is nothing wrong with this, however, if there is for little to no time for schoolwork, church, friends, or anything of that, what is the most important thing? The U.S. National Study of Youth and Religion reported that religious teenagers with engagement and regular attendance report better health than non-religious teens. Church is important, ladies and gentlemen, God is important in these students' lives. And I would like to pose a challenge or at least something to discuss someday in the future. The current curriculum teaches students that they are accidents. Their existence is a mere cosmic accident. Even, even though there is another theory out there that very seem to, to want to touch, and that is intelligent design theory. Uh, that there was a creator to the creation. No, this is not a strictly Christian theory, all major scientists held true to this theory. I even had one student a few, few years back who told me that she took the study material that we used for youth group one night on creation and we simply used terms like intelligent design and talked about the different theories. And she showed it to her science teacher at the time and her science teacher said to her, I'm really glad you were learning about this in youth group, I would like to teach this, but I can't. Finally, I would like to, I would like us to become a school that says that Wednesday night is church night, that practices.
That's three minutes.
Okay, uh, thank you for taking the time to listen and please remember I love you all and we are always praying for you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to our administrative reports, starting with the principles.
Yeah, so um kinda like it says in my report, we are trying to do our uh middle of the year assessments. Um, the weather threw that off just a little bit last week, but super proud of the testing team is over at the elementary and the, and the staff in, in both buildings um to kinda conduct that testing as best as they can. And to uh kinda see and do our comparisons from where our students were at the beginning of the year to here at the middle of the year, so. Uh, we will continue to have those discussions and, and um kinda try and figure out, use the data to, to guide our um decisions about how we can best ser- serve our students, so. Um, professional development, we are working through the, the middle of the year conversations with staff in terms of uh how's, how's progress towards meeting your goal going and some of those other kinda things. Uh, we continue to work on our MTSS process, it's a, it's an ongoing process, but it's a, uh, one that benefits both staff and students and um. Uh, we continue to work through our mentoring program and our reading curriculums, just kinda ironing out wrinkles and some of those kinda things. Especially in regards to the um reading curriculum. Um, and I would be remiss if I didn't, and I think we'll touch on this a little bit uh later in the recognition, but I want to say a huge congratulations to our third grade students and the third grade teacher team, kind of led by Mrs. Helmers, Mrs. Jenna Helmers. Um, they put together a very, very successful toy drive here before Christmas, raising nearly th- uh nearly four hundred toys. All of them were wrapped and given to families, were given to local churches and were given to daycares. And we're able to bless a lot of the places where our students um both came from and currently visit as well in terms of churches and nurseries and some of those kinda things, so a hugely successful thing, so way to go to those people, so. Any questions?
For my report, I included just some mid-year numbers I saw in previous years Stan had shared attendance. Uh, I actually pulled five twelve attendance and that was up just slightly like a tenth of a percent from last year. So no significant change up or down there. I did pull uh numbers on office referrals, that is up pretty significantly. Uh, Kent and I talked about that a little bit, I think some of that, or a lot of that, hard to tell, is probably due to things that we're documenting as referrals. That maybe weren't re, you know, previously documented and maybe just being new, o- over-documenting, I don't know, but um. So, that is up, but I don't have any significance, concerns about behavior. I don't think that's a reflection that things are twice as bad or behaviors twice as bad, so. It'll be interesting to see year to year how that changes. Um, staff are working hard to update the registration guide for the high school. We'd like to get that finalized by the end of January. And um that kinda sets us up for getting kids registered for classes and then working on the schedule towards the end of the year. Um, Kent and I have been, even yet today, we're talking about some scheduled things with staff, changes that are coming up in the next year, what we'll be doing. Um, we do have a staff gathering planned January nineteenth at the brewery, just kinda uh supporting staff morale and engagement. Encouraging families to come um to just spend some time together outside of school and we'll be streaming the basketball game at the brewery that night, they have an away game. Um, PD goals, I've been meeting with our seven twelve staff, reviewing their goals. Uh, their individual professional development plan goals, that's going well, lots of great discussions about the assessments, formative assessments that they've created and have implemented. And then steering the conversation to what that's gonna be used for next year, compiling that data and then using it to um steer our direction. And so, again, just supporting that tier one level of MTSS, if you remember our discussion about goals uh for now and into the future for PD. And then activities wise, lots going on, um, winter sports of course are about mid-season. Uh, robotics just had their kickoff, January sixth. Um, esports is gonna be getting started here soon and then this is a busy season for a lot of our performing arts. Jazz band, jazz choir, opus, honor choir, honor band, lots of events and things happening and then large group has their first contest this Saturday, um, so lots going on at the high school. And then my staff attendance for professional development and um just day-to-day attendance is back to down there, so. Any questions?
Is this the, okay, is this the first year, I know we've done some robotics through STEM and things like that before, is this like a new thing that we're doing with robotics?
Yes, um, so I think we've done like Lego, some like Lego league, maybe in the lower grades. I know Mike Anderson brought that up, that he's done some of that here. Um, this is a partnership with First Robotics.
Okay.
And it's, it's um the largest uh weight class for, so it's, the machines are a hundred and twenty-five pounds. So that's the largest high school competitive weight class that First Robotics has to offer. Um, and we got into it because of grants, so they're offering, I think we ended up with like sixteen or eighteen thousand dollars worth of grants. Um, which, which pretty much fully funds the first two years and we had an advisor who was interested in doing it, Mackenzie Brockish, so. Yep, and Stan, I think you went down to the kickoff.
Yep.
Um, so that was January sixth, so they have basically eight weeks to build the robot and then they compete um in March. So, yeah, and there's, they, they put together some video footage from the kickoff, releasing the games, it's all uh music themed, so it's called crescendo.
Crescendo is the name of it this year.
Yep, so I think our robot is gonna be able to shoot discs, is what it sounds like, so, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, cool opportunity for our kids, for sure.
All right. The building security uh comment you had in there, does, are all the doors locked outside the school on the up until the main, uh, main entrance?
Yes, do they all work a hundred percent of the time? No, in terms of like some, I mean, and that's one of the things we've been working on is replacing some of the doors and when I say we have had conversations with Tony and Greg. One of the things we're running into, there's not a lot of vendors right now that are willing to come, just, they want new builds. They want new construction, so to like replace a metal door with a lock mechanism in a structure that's already there is not a high need on lots, so trying to get that, find vendors to do that has been a challenge, but for the most part, yes, they're supposed to be.
We've, we've been talking a lot about the weight room access and then access to the locker rooms, that's what we're. So the exterior doors aren't as much of an issue, but it's once they are into the weight room, then they could have access, so we're changing that. Would be something we're, new we're doing, so.
You were asking the question based on what you had in this room.
Right, yeah, yeah, so that's something we're changing, yeah.
Stan?
All right, um, first off, I wanted to thank you for the work you guys did in the PD session, our work session at the beginning of the month, um, I thought that was really beneficial, I appreciate the hard work that you guys put into that. And we've already used some of our discussions in that in terms of making some decisions on some things we're working on for moving forward this spring and into next year as we got started on a few things. And um eventually into discussions with our calendar, which we're not presenting for next year. Um, tonight, but we will eventually, that we're working on, so that was very um beneficial and that's one of the big things that I've been working on towards our literacy and math um scores, at least my goal for that. And then um as Casey and Kent both alluded to, just having a lot of discussions and framing that around of what our needs are for curriculum and staff next fall. And the schedules that go along with that, so that's just something that we continually are working on. Um, the staff retention engagement, um, there's been some various outings and things we've worked on, I think Casey referenced one of them for this Friday and things like that. I am working on that I had mentioned um to you guys, some financial forums. Just trying to simplify and show some of the conversations that we've had as a board and that I've shown you guys about just our enrollment history and how that affects our budgets and staffing moving forward and putting that, you know, we had a two-hour work session on finances, well, we're, I'm not gonna do that in a series of meetings with staff, so trying to get that down to make it useful, beneficial and kinda show them where, where we're at to answer some questions that they might have that and kind of like a, a light version of that. Um, continued discussions on staffing for next year and how we do that. One of the things we were um happy to receive was NCC had a grant for a career counselor for three schools and basically one of the schools went through and so some schools could put their names in and we were the ones, one of the schools that did that and we were awarded that reward, so we have a career counselor that will be coming here, is it once a week? How often is she gonna come?
Yeah, I think so, and then doing some like larger.
Yep.
Presentations too.
And so, um, we don't have to pay for it, it's paid through, through NCC, but then they can do some um work with some of the juniors and seniors and helping them get paperwork done and things like that, applying for FAFSA and then can do some presentations to parents, so that's what we mean by a career counselor is kind of helping with that post-secondary stuff. Um, and something to kind of assist our high school counselor with that. And then the, my third goal, working on keeping Sibley Sheen financially stable and viable. I think the financial forums fit both of those, so that's what I've um mentioned in both of those things. We've been looking to a lot of our evaluations and projections moving forward and then just trying to um work on getting started on our budget, that's gonna be a big process this year, cause they kinda changed the timelines and everything on that, so. Those are things that me and Kendra have been working on and then a lot of discussions in the last few weeks with our state legislatures, um specifically if you've read the news, one of the proposals, the significant cutbacks to the AAs and just trying to advocate for them, cause of some of the services they provide us. Um, one of the legislators had a comment, we have about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that is called flow-through money, so it wasn't money that Sibley Sheen never had, but it comes to us and it's called flow-through, cause then we pay it directly to the AIA, so. Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars is a lot. But that's how the AIA is funded with the schools within their um geographic area. And as I was talking to one of the legislators, I just, I just used two special without their names involved and all the different services that we have to provide them that we get through the AIA and I said, we couldn't even touch the cost of paying professionals to come in and do that on an hourly wage at three hundred and thirty thousand. When you consider speech services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, a beha- a behaviorist. You know, and that was just off the top of my head, I said, let alone some of the equipment that they brought in. We've had people come in for um audiologists, for those that are deaf, we've had some that have come in to provide assistive technology for those that are blind or very low vision, I said, just right there, I've probably blown through over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of services, so. Um, spent a fair amount of time and hopefully we'll continue to do that, just to, we're not saying they're perfect, but they provide a lot of services that are really valuable and to say that, put it on the free market, we could contract it ourselves, which is one of the proposals. I don't even know how we do that. Because now like if, I just had this conversation with Kent the other day about a student, when we have an IP, he can contact the AIA and say, hey, we're having this meeting on Wednesday and they coordinate and bring all the people in. Well now, if, if they, if they were self-contracted, it's not just a phone call, like how much time would that take to bring five specialists in? We're all individually contracted, not through the AIA, I, I, I don't know that you could do that very efficiently anyway, so there's some definite concerns there, so. That's my summary.
Any questions? Make sure we write our legislators, that's for sure. Board committees?
So finance, some of this might have been delayed a little bit, but we'll have to take, need to have a meeting to begin discussions on our staff pay for next year negotiations. Um, some of that, since we've started planning this, will look a little different with one of the governor's proposals if they push through, it's changing the pay for start, and I, I'm for it, but how that funding stream happens of raising starting teachers' pay and then veterans' teachers' pay, which are proposals anyone at twelve years or more, they have levels for that. But without explaining how that comes in, I don't know how that all looks yet. Um, facilities, we have not met, I will keep you posted, but we've had just some discussions. We're trying to, Kendra and I have been working on getting a budget and an idea of what we can spend for some of our facilities through Save and Pebble and so forth, and then policy, we met on the fifth to profess, present some changes that you'll see this evening.
Next, we have our recognition of excellence and.
So I'll read this for uh. Ava here, I wasn't expecting her to be with no school today. Um, one of the things that Kent mentioned though was a huge recognition and congratulations to our third grade team, Mrs. Jenna Helmers, Miss Tess Rockman and Mrs. Nagel and the third grade students for their immensely successful toy drive during success, December. They raised nearly four hundred toys and gifted them to local families, daycares and churches during the giving season, they were able to bless many with this act of service, thanks to all the individuals and businesses who participated by donating. And we had many people from a variety of avenues donate to that. A thank you to those who helped wrap all these donations before they were donated. Um, in our generals, this, December generals of the week, for the week of the first of December, the elementary was Armenio Mendez, middle school was Jocelyn DeZao, high school was Elizabeth Walton and the staff was Barb Williamson and Katie Schroder. For the week of December eighth, the elementary was Dixon Eddy, middle school was Levi Sailor, high school was Dawson Byer and the staff was Renee Schmidt. And the week of December fifteenth, the elementary was Lisa Lujans, middle school was Amelia Hookstra, high school was Ashton Gleason. And the staff was Brenda Tuji and Amy Elser. And for the week of the twenty-second, the elementary was Alice Osland, middle school was Landon Monier, high school was Parker Berry and the staff was Janelle Jensen. Very cool, congrats to all.
Continue then with our discussion items and our literacy goals presentation.
And I will let Mr. Weirzma go.
All right, if I stand over here?
Yeah.
All right, um, thank you, I've done this a few times, so. I will uh try to conduct this kinda like I conduct my classrooms, you have a little idea of how that works, I did that a couple of years ago with A- APL, so you're gonna go to the next slide here for me. All my classes start with a bell ringer, um, so there's your bell ringer right now, I'm not gonna make you answer, I guess we'll, we'll do it like church a little bit, I won't make any kind of talk, but. Do you know who our district social studies teachers are and what they teach and who's on the social studies curriculum? I know the, the administration knows, but anybody wanna answer?
Joisha, where?
Yep, and she teaches.
She teaches fifth and sixth.
Yep, fifth and sixth grade.
Katharina, in fourth grade?
She was in past years, but all the elementary teachers, I think some, teach some social studies. Secondary teachers, I'm sure parents probably know them. Yep, Mr. Ruggles. And Ms. Pink, yep, so those are uh, and then we do have two elementary teachers and those kinda rotate, um, who are uh on our curriculum team as well, you can go to the next slide. So, uh then the next thing in my classroom is we would go through our agenda or objectives, so today we did the bell ringer and I'll do introductions. I have some individual updates from all the teachers that they shared with me and I'll just kinda give you a little highlight of that. Um, and then I have a couple of slides on some overall areas of focus for our team this year, what we're kinda trying to work on this year as a social studies team. So, in my classroom, they would show up like this, students will be able to, and those will be written on the board, so. Hopefully you'll be able to know what's going on in the social studies classroom and what our focus is, what we're working on this year, so. Uh, me, Ryan Weirzma, I teach seventh and eighth grade social studies in the middle school. Seventh grade is contemporary global studies, which is very broad, it um when I, that's the fifth year doing that when the state changed that, but it's actually turned out to be something I really, really enjoy. And so I can talk more about that later on. And then eighth grade is U.S. history and civics, so the history part would be colonial times to the Civil War. So the history part would be colonial times to the Civil War and then the civics is. How our government works, basically. This was kind of mind blowing to type out right here. Uh, sixteenth year of teaching, fifteenth at SO, fourteenth doing social studies. And my seventh year as the district social studies curriculum leader and last year was not me. Uh, Julie did that because I was teaching some math last year. So now they took that or. Lightened my load a little bit. And then I think most of you know, but I graduated from SO in two thousand and three. So I'm very, very, very proud of that. Go to the next slide. Uh, our team. Okay, it's like you said, um, Scott Ruggles teaches US history. And American government is required classes, other electives. Um, Ms. Fink, she teaches there. Uh, middle school, fifth grade is rights and responsibilities, which again is very broad. And then sixth grade, a little more focused, it's ancient world cultures. And then the two elementary teachers who are on our team this year are Madison Nagel and Janaya Horseman. And that can kind of change because. They mainly do social, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of social studies is done through like the reading curriculum and stuff like that. It's not necessarily designated social studies. Time. And go to the next slide. Okay, so I'm not going to read these word for word. You, I think probably all have these in your agenda if you want to check it out. But I just asked each teacher to kind of answer these two questions. So the big thing that um Mr. Ruggles has going on is. In the fall, it's an election year, so they'll be uh voting. And so we will have students who are eighteen and who will be able to vote. So it's been a big push for him to get in his American government class, get kids registered. And I believe he, last notice, he reached the ninety percent. So I think they're going to get some sort of certificate or award. Or something for that. So be looking forward to that. Um, and then what he is working on, he is getting close to being done teaching. Uh, I'll let him, you know, make that decision, but he is putting together uh his curriculum notebooks, getting it down on paper. For when that time would come and for any new teacher coming in, or if there's any restructuring or anything like that, he's trying to get that all down for future teachers. Ms. Fink? Uh, and I've talked, we talk about these things every meeting, so I know what's going on in their class and that's one of the things I just like, social studies teachers like to talk, so. Uh, Ms. Uh, Fink is working, uh, I'm new in her class. Is, uh, I think both of these kind of go together with her literacy project and stuff like that. She's trying to get more. Project-based assessments and things going on in her classroom, get kids more, a little bit more active and that will include. You know, some research, but also some primary sources. She's got a movie class. So that's something that she's been trying to work on a lot more is, and it's something that's necessary is to get kids a little bit more involved, get them doing more things. And go to the next slide. Uh, Julie. She is, and this is a good thing, uh, she is going into our Iowa history unit for the fifth and sixth grade. So actually a lot of what she teaches. Will take care of some of my Iowa history standards as well. So that's actually very good that it kind of, we can cover all that. And um, they have a presentation coming up at the Sibley Public Library. And she also is working very hard at getting. Digital copies of things, getting your curriculum lined, having that all ready to go. For uh the next stage of her career and what happens with that. And so. We know there could be some changeover with teachers and things like that. So we've really focused on trying to. Get things down for the future and new curriculum and all that kind of stuff because. About five or six years ago, Iowa kind of redid all the curriculum and and so. We wanted to be able to go through that and teach that a little bit and kind of figure out what we want. And then now that we've kind of have tweaked it and made some changes. Now we want to get all those things down for, you know, curriculum maps and for, you know, new teachers and things like that for the future. So. Because it was all new five eight standards. It got all switched around and um, things like that. So you can go to the next slide then. So for me, what's going on in my classroom, uh, believe it or not, there are a lot of things going on in the world right now. And so that has been actually really exciting. That has provided me with lots of opportunities to connect my class to what's going on in the world. Some grades and classes are more into it, some are not. I know this current freshman class, last year's eighth graders, were really into current events. They really wanted to talk about it, what no, what was going on, ask me questions. So, you know, with seventh grade contemporary global studies, we talk about that stuff all the time. So we're actually entering into our religions and conflict unit. Uh, with the seventh graders and so, I mean, this is going to be super fun for me to teach, but. We'll kind of try to understand what's going on in Palestine and the Holy Land and what is Hamas and all that kind of stuff. And now. Things are escalating in the Red Sea with the Houthi, with Hou- Houthei military group. Um, and so those are all really fun things I can try to connect to what's going on, not fun things for the world, but as a teacher. And then US history and civics, I mean, we're in a, an election year. I don't know if you've. You know, the caucus is tonight. I don't know if your phones, I think mine's gone off four or five times since I've been sitting here already. Um, Nikki Haley and all those people are texting me all the time, so. I can tell the students that all the time. So that'll be uh really fun and really great way to teach. The Electoral College and that whole process and and everything like that. And so we don't get too much into. Politics. You know. A little bit, they ask questions. I just want them, the big thing is I just want them to kind of know what they're saying, what they're talking about. But that's been really fun. And then what am I working on in my classroom? Well, uh, this has been a goal of mine for a long time is I wanted to teach a novel in seventh grade. Or in one of my classes. And so I've implemented that with the refugee. Novel, which has been really good and that's got connections to. Um, one of the refugees is leaving Syria. And so that's been a great way to connect to some of my other units. And I've enjoyed that. I'm still tweaking it. I've done it twice and. Still picking the minds of the reading teachers now and how the best to do that. I like to do a lot of it in class and I'm wondering if I should do, have them read a little bit more on their own and. What's the best way and all that kind of stuff. So I would really like to either add a, seventh grade is so easy to add some because it's, there's so many books about like what's going on in the world. But I would like to add one for eighth grade or maybe another one for seventh grade. There's some room in the, the curriculum and. And to be able to do that. So, and then of course our uh goals for this year, which I'll talk a little bit more on the next slide. So. I'm going to, does anybody have any questions? And I'm going fast, but it's cold out and you guys probably want to go watch football, so. Okay, so this has been something else that we've spent some time on in our curriculum groups, our individualized development plan, the IDPTP goal. So each one of the teachers has a different goal. It's kind of related. I'm sure Casey, have you, Mr. Hertz, have you spoken to them about what we're, are they? Okay, so I don't want to go into that.
We've touched on it.
Yep. But so when we meet, every time we meet every month, we just, I always like to start out with. How's your goal going? What are some things you're trying out to reach your goal? You know, it's most of us, I believe, are on. The formative assessment part, implementing formative assessments and how that works. So we just discuss it, share ideas. Talk about what we're doing, what they've liked, what has gone well, challenges, things like that. So just like to talk. Uh, about that. So that's been a focus of us this year in our meetings. We go to the next slide, Mr. Weirzma. And then also I've been informed that social studies is on the curriculum cycle this year for new curriculum. I feel like we just got new curriculum not that long ago, but I guess it has been about five years. So we do not need new textbooks. I don't think anybody really needs new textbooks for social studies since most of us just got some. So we'll be looking into supplemental type things. So the novel that I started teaching, I've just bought like four or five copies and then there's an online we've been using. So I might look to maybe buy a class set now that I've used it and I feel good. I didn't want to buy one without teaching it a few times. I know Mr. Schuler would like some resource books to go along with her. Uh, textbook that she has, if there are any primary source things that could be used. But with social studies, a lot of the stuff you can find online fairly easily. I have all my books from college, so I photocopy stuff out of that all the time. So there, there's not a huge need to go buy stuff, I think, for social studies, especially that we got new textbooks. But we'll be looking at, is there something that would be beneficial? To supplement our five twelve classes. And then talking with some of the elementary teachers. It would, they would be interested in, you know, finding maybe more social studies focused. Stuff to implement in their reading program so they can hit their social studies goals as, or standards as well. And so we'll be. Some of the elementary teachers are fairly new, so we'll be going back and looking at what are kind of some of this, the standards in elementary, which they're very broad. So they can be touched on with almost anything. So we'll be looking at, is there anything that we can help them uh meet some of their. Their social studies goals in the time constraint that they have in elementary school. So. Those are a few of the things we're working on. Yeah, I know I went kind of fast. Uh, I will, I uh, I do not talk that fast in class. We'll pause and we'll do a thing, pair share and stuff like that, but I took some of those out. I thought we'd just keep this moving and. And it'd be all right with that. So if you just want to take a moment to think about a highlight or a takeaway from the presentation, anything that I touched on. Somebody would ask you what I talked about, um, just take a moment. And uh, usually I'd put kids on the clock for. I'd say twenty seconds and it'd end up being forty to sixty seconds because I just would walk around and talk to somebody and then that's how it usually works. Would anybody like to share?
Yeah, one thing I thought of is like, as you continue with history, how much do they keep adding back in that you teach, you know, taking away from?
So that's a good question. Actually, I would say. You know, the, the weakest history that I, like, I feel like I know the, the least amount is probably like, like from the fifties to the two thousands. Because you just don't usually teach that. So I've got the history part and then my contemporary global studies, which keeps me up to date on what things are going on now. So very little, I would say we don't, as we're going forward, we don't delete anything. So um. Not a lot, really.
Like you mentioned, the, the Red Sea and, you know, this Hamas thing, you know, is that part of history or not, or?
Um, so it's.
Like your nine eleven, do you add?
Yep, I have a terrorist unit, terrorism unit that I do in contemporary global studies. And so what that particular class is, I'll blend a little bit of history with what's going on. So. That has been good because I've been able to teach some more and that kind of thing. But, but yes, there is. Things like that that I try to tie in and that, and that work. Um. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
But yeah, it's. And I, I try to connect all that stuff in. So then, you know, where did the? The Holy Land, right? So there are three major religions that. The Holy Land is important to them. Well, that all connects to everything because. Europeans, the Chris, mainly the Christians went to Europe and then they discovered the new, the new world. So they're like, yeah, we're kind of out on the Holy Land. Well, we'll take all this land over here and that's something that we learned about colonizing and then seventh grade, but then colonial times, that all connects. And then. You know, then for a huge chunk of time Muslims controlled the Holy Land and everybody was pretty good with that. And then, you know, when World War Two happened, then Europe's like, oh, our bad. Sorry Jews, you can have the Holy Land. And then that's kind of when the conflict started up and. And so now what's going, and then Hamas militant group, terrorist group, that all kind of connects together and religion and. So it, I try really, really hard. To connect it and to make it relevant to their lives. That's really important to me. And I even. My students probably get tired of me saying that, but I just, I remember classes where I could, and maybe this is probably why I want to be a teacher. I can tell pretty quickly if this is going to be a waste of my time or not, especially in college. I could tell pretty quick if this was going to be beneficial or is this going to be interesting? Do they really care? And so that really drives how I teach and. You know, if in, in eighth grade US history, does the panic of eighteen thirty seven, is that really relevant? Hmm, at one time I taught it. Now I don't think so. So now I don't, we don't go over that. So, uh, and our. Standards, especially for seventh and eighth grade are pretty broad. That almost anything you teach can connect. Like one of the standards is understand how geography will impact. Uh, current situations or decisions or something like that. Well. Holy Land is a fight over land. You're not fighting over whose religion. They want the land. So that, that's the kind of, they're super broad, so they can. When you first look at it, it's really intimidating, but now that I've been in it a whole lot, it's actually really nice. So.
I like, I think the department as a whole does a good job, like you're saying, applying, trying to apply things to what kids would be relevant to them. And then I think you're a group as a curriculum that is willing to take chances and try new things. I- in general, you know, the project-based learning, trying a novel. So I, I do appreciate that, that the department is willing to try different things to make it more interesting to kids.
Well, I just, there are. And that's why I love answering their questions when I'm able to, that keeps me up to date because then I, I try to show them, well, it's good to know this because then you know what's going on and. You can understand what people are saying and the news and you can get some of the funny jokes. That are on late night shows and stuff like that. I mean, you don't follow the news. You might not get a lot of those. I, I wrote a whole paper on that in college, an English paper on that. That was my thesis. If you don't know what's going on, you're not going to get any of these jokes on late night shows. So, and the research was great because I just watched hours of late night shows. So, and those kind of things are things that they, now that they see on TikTok and stuff like that, like they would not. So that knowledge is power and it's good to be educated and you can think whatever you want about it. Like we talk about. Government is, the government taxes its people. Politics is how much and what to do with it. Well, I need you to know that they do this. You need to know that. It happens. It's a thing. They do it. You can think whatever you want about this. Should they do more? Should they do less? Should they use it for that? Should they use it for that? What, I just need you to know. Then you can figure that out on your own. You want the government to do more? It needs more tax money. You want the government to do less? Needs less tax money. Those kind of things. I just say, you need to, you can figure that out, but this is. What it is. Those are the kind of things. We talk about that a lot. So I'd hope if you ask any of my students, they would be able to tell you that. Government is what it does. Politics is how it does it. And you can think however you want. I just want you to know. So, any other additional questions? I love questions and I love talking about teaching, so. Absolutely love it. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much for everything that you do. Um, hopefully you can tell and I really want my students to tell. I think SO is a great place. Um, I think we can be successful both here, both, I know we have limitations and I know we have struggles and I get all that. But I think, I know, I know we can be successful in the classroom and I know we can be successful in extracurriculars. And I try very hard to get to that to happen in all the things that I do. So, thank you very much for all that you do. And again, I say I have a lot of confidence in administration, the school board and our administrators. I feel very confident in that and I'm excited about uh. What we can do in continuing on. So thank you. And again, any of you are welcome in my classroom or if you want to come to any of the practices or anything that I, that I run, you're welcome to come anytime. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your night.
Thank you, Ryan.
I was in Mr. Weirzma's class when I was subbing and.
Yeah.
That was good. I was interested. They were doing some review and it was good. So, yeah.
Anytime. I'm not very good at like getting actively asking people to come in. I just, that's just not what I, you know.
Open the door.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that far enough ahead and I was just controlling myself and what I got going on. But yeah, anytime, anything at all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Weirzma. Okay, go on with the two-minute board policy and finance moment.
So, um, question for you, do as board members, I'll jump right into this, we, we talk about. Um, having standards and and objectives and things like that. Ryan talked a little bit about it. We've talked about as administrators, do board members? Do you have standards? Do you know? So kind of a trick question I wouldn't ask otherwise, but if you look at the paper in front of you. So this is from, and I have the principal's and everyone has one here. This is from the Iowa Association of School Boards and it's their core six. Standards for school boards and school board members. And I won't read it all, but being a visionary team and you can see what goes into that. Standard one, standard two is talking about student learning. Standard three is district culture. Standard four is policy and legal. Standard five is fiscal responsibility and standard six is advocacy. And some of the times at different times as a school board member, school, some things we put more. Effort and onus in it than others. So we're going to do a little activity here and you get to keep the rest here. But you need to take twenty-one M and M's out of your bag.
Well, what if we can't open them?
That's what I was just saying. A little bit of a challenge.
It's like 21?
Yep. You can eat the rest, I don't care. You can eat when we're done, but.
It's a little cold to be dexterous.
Okay, so the 21 is because it's not exact, it doesn't round into six evenly at all. But every M and M is a vote, okay? And I know some people place more importance on certain M and M colors and flavors than others, but tonight they're all equal. So you get to place, and there's no rules, but you get to place your M and Ms on the six standards of where you see importance. You could put some on each, you don't have to. And I'll, I'll tell you right now, there's no right or wrong answer here, but I won't say anything more than that. So put the M and Ms in terms of school board standards where you see their value. So one M and M is a vote and you got to place all 21. If you get a chance to wrap up here in a few seconds, go ahead. So as you're doing this, there's no right or wrong answer. Some of it might go based off your frame of reference or how you're considering it. I know for myself, I've thought through, I'm probably looking at this way more as a superintendent lens in how I put things on here. Doesn't mean others are less important, but that's just where I'm at. I think some of these things, if I was looking strictly, for instance, as a principal lens in my mind, I, I would probably change my vote a little bit. In terms of where I put things that were more or less strong or what I dealt with. And so some of it is just maybe what you're familiar with or personal experiences and, and you guys as a board overall. But anyone want to, did anyone try and put them all equally as best they could? Cause it doesn't come out equal.
I knew they weren't going to come out equal, but I didn't put as many in advocacy. I know it is very important. It's something I need to improve on myself at writing letters to our legislators, knowing what's going on. So I was kind of weak on that side, knowing I need to improve, but I think it's important just learning as a board. Some of our things, policy is really important. District culture, but visionary fiscal responsibility, understanding that. I appreciated the work session on where you talked to us about, you know, how our finances work. And that's important. We're making a lot of decisions for our taxpayers for this district and we need to make sure that we're informed and know what we're doing.
Yeah, great explanation, thank you. Anyone else have, did someone put like a majority in one or, one or two, or did we all try and distribute evenly?
I started distributing evenly, then I'm like, well, no, this one, and I viewed it a lot through my principal lens, kind of like what you were saying. And so in the end, I kind of ended up with more student learning and district culture as much higher than the others, specifically student learning. Just a focus of my day to day, more so than some of the others.
So I'm laughing, these two didn't know I was doing this. I did not front load them at all. And that's why I'm laughing, because to be honest, where I'm looking like in standard two and three.
Yeah.
They put a lot more and like that's, when I said, if I was viewing my principal lens, I probably would have focused a lot more on learning and district culture, like within the staff that I'm directly responsible for. And I don't know that I would have done any in advocacy as principal, very few where I have, that's something I have to, kind of what Laurel said, it's not natural. The rev noses are to correspond with legislators and advocate, but something I had to work on. And policy, I probably would put one or two on, cause it's good to be aware of policy, but I would have said the superintendent more or less tells me that. And now that's one of the bigger things, so it kind of depends on your role. So anyone else have anything they want to share insight?
I have my strengths on visionary student learning, the culture and fiscal.
Yeah, and there's no right or wrong. And sometimes we, I think we live in different areas too. And depending on what your school is dealing with at the time, and I don't mean in a bad way, but you know, right now we're, we're, as an example, we're looking at reduced enrollment and making some choices to keep us strong moving forward. So naturally I think for myself, I'm, we're talking about policy and legal, making sure we're offering everything we need to and being fiscally responsible. And I don't mean that that's a bad thing, but that's something you're living in. You could see, if you go back to maybe a central Iowa school where they're having some debates over whatever the last few years that they've had their debates on. You know, probably their culture and, and their vision's a big thing because they're, they're trying to figure out what direction they're going. Cause some of even their school board elections were highly political, you know? So they might have some different things they're going through. So it kind of just depends what you have going on, but we probably live in some of these areas all the different times. So just something to think about. I did not create this, but I'm not that creative. So we, we were at a training and we saw this and when we got going, we both looked at each other and Kendra goes, you should do that. I thought the same thing. I thought the same thing.
That's good, can't go wrong giving out evidence.
The presenter of ours though, he did pennies, but then he asked for them back as he, he had, and he goes, unless you really need 21 pennies. He goes, I asked for them back so I don't have to keep going to the bank, he said, so. The second half, we're going to talk about, I think sometimes we go through, I'm scrolling up here, but in the approval, and I know you can look at them, but some of our general fund reports. So we were going to kind of give a little more explanation, I guess would be a way to say that.
So there's three reports that I do every month in, in the consent agenda items that you guys approve every month. We'll just start with categorical funding. Do you want to click on that one?
Yep.
So this, this report is all the different categorical funds. We, we talk about categorical funds. Basically it's money that we receive from either state or federal dollars that we receive. And it can only be used for specified purposes. This is a spreadsheet that kind of shows you what those are, how much money we're supposed to receive and, and how much we are spending. As of, this one is as of December 31st. The, they go by state and federal dollars, the different codes show that, that's not really necessary for you guys to know. But federal dollars, just so you know, a lot of those over on the balance column, they have negative numbers. The third column in is because we have to spend them first and then we are reimbursed for them. So I have to file a claim for them and then we get the funding several months later. So we've spent money that we haven't received yet, that's why that's, the federal dollars, we're required to do that. So the, the first column shows that if there's, if there's carryover from the previous year, we've been spending down our categoricals. So most of them do not. ELL obviously had at the top there $217,000 of carryover. This year we added a teacher and a half, so that will be spent down, quite a bit of that will be spent down this year. The next column just shows the FY 24 allocations of what we're supposed to receive. Some of that is a little, it's, some of them are set dollars, some of them Medicaid. We don't really know what we're going to receive because we haven't done our, all of our claims for the year. Most of the other ones are pretty much set of what we're going to receive. The next column just shows what we have received this year. The next one is what we've spent and the balance that we have currently. And then what the next one is what we have to receive yet. And what the next, the last one is what we can spend. So is there questions, specific questions? I just wanted you guys to know what, what I do these reports and we haven't really ever talked about them, so. Either just pick one of the other ones, it doesn't matter. This general fund spreadsheet, so it compares to two years. Did I put the wrong one on there?
This is for the month ending June 30.
Oh, it put the whole thing.
Yeah.
Can you, sorry, I didn't realize that it's supposed to just put, can you scroll down to December? Oh gosh, it's really wonky. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that it looked like that.
I guess.
You can just go pick one that looks more normal, up at the top maybe. Sorry, it didn't format right when I.
Page seven?
Yeah.
That's not in.
There you go. Okay. Sorry about that, usually I double check before I put them on there. So this one is about our, our cash in our general fund account. As you can see, the opening cash balance is our, our bank balance or our book balance as of December 1st. And then it splits out the revenues that we've received, 51,000 this month, in the month of December for property taxes. Other revenues from local sources, which can be anything from weight rooms to donations, that kind of thing. Revenues from state sources, those are, most of those are the categoricals that you saw in the last spreadsheet. And then same with the federal dollars are, is generally categorical money. And then other revenues can be, that, that's probably insurance proceeds that we received. So, so that totals that and the columns are month to date and then it adds up the total, running total for the year, for year to date. And then the third column is the budget. So this is our line item budget that you've heard Stan and I talk about working on. And this is what we're expecting to receive on the top portion for the revenues. And then the last column is the percent of the budget. So we budgeted for property taxes, 3,082,000. So far we've received 1.8 million, we've received 60.34% of what we're expecting to receive. And the same thing in the bottom section, it splits it out into just different broad categories of instruction expenditures. Student support services, transportation is down there, business administration, maintenance, that kind of thing. So same thing, our month to date expenditures and then it, it shows you for our expenditures, we budgeted a total of 10,240,000. So far through December, we had spent 3.7 million, so we've spent 37.03%. And then it just compares the whole thing on the other, on the other side is last year. So you can kind of compare and see kind of where we're at compared to last year. This one is our line item budget. The other spreadsheet that we'll go to next is our certified budget. So our line item budget is really what we're expecting to spend. Our certified budget, we'll talk about more here coming up in the next few months, cause we have to approve that and have a public hearing about it. This spreadsheet, this, our published budget, the second from the right column, it, it really, for the most part breaks down into four categories. Instruction, support services, non-instructional, and then others kind of combined, some of those are combined together. So when we do our certified budget, that, that drives our tax rate, those, we have to put in expenditures that we expect to spend over the next fiscal year. And these numbers are what, what we've put in for that in that published budget. And then you can see, so that public, the certified budget is over all of our funds, what we plan to spend over general fund activity, management, save and PEPL, debt service and our nutrition fund. So you can see those, they're, they're split out in each of the categories and each of the funds, and then it totals them up. And it shows, the last column shows the percent of budget that we have spent so far. And December would be, we're halfway through the year, from July to December would be 50% of our fiscal year. So we, we're at 50% percent, we've spent 42.35% of what we put in our certified budget. The two numbers are different between line item budget and certified budget expenditure numbers. One thing to keep in mind, so we do our budget in, we start, we'll start in January, we'll start next week at a workshop. So we have to predict what we're going to end this year with and then predict what we're going to spend the following year. So it's, it's not an exact science, it's a, you know, this is what we, we know big, big picture of things that we have coming up. You know, if we were having a big project or, you know, a construction project or something, we would try and plan for that and put those in, in the certified budget. But it more, it's more of a generalization. Our line item budget, we tried to get way more exact, especially now that we're, know we're going to have some things coming up that we may need to lessen our expenditures. So we try and be pretty exact on that, on the line item budget. So questions? You can always ask questions if you see something and you think what, what is going on here, just let me know.
Always good.
Yeah.
Answering them, I've been in a few times and you've done really great. Thank you, Kendra. Okay.
The mid-year financial update. Been here. So kind of piggybacking off just what Kendra just said here. Traditionally in January, we've done a financial, mid-year financial update, for lack of a better word here. The one thing to show you why it says estimated FY 23, okay? Estimated fiscal year 23, remember ended last June 30. For the most part, most of those numbers we know. There's a few sometimes that are still even at this point in flux or that we, that were in flux coming into December, just because of, just the way this state does some different funding and things like that and expenses and what you can get back into your budget. But for the most part, that should be pretty spot on accurate, but then estimated FY 24 is for the current year, cause we are currently in FY 24. So you can kind of see year by year going back roughly the last five to fiscal year 19, 2019, what our costs were at the year. And you can kind of see how that's gone up the last few years, which is natural, you'd expect that to be for the most part, when you don't make major changes. And what our maximum authorized budget is, and it shows that, or, you know, we talk about our unspent authorized balance. What you are allowed or given authority to spend each year, plus what you didn't spend the year before is where that comes from and so forth. And so then on, it doesn't have a number here, but it says your unspent authorized budget year line is the number that we want to keep, keep our eye on, keep up, keep in, keep in mind, keep at the forefront here, for lack of a better word. But the biggest thing you want to see on the bottom here, what I like to look at is the percent of annual authority spent. So of that unspent authorized budget that we're allowed to spend each year, what percent of that did we spend? And you can see we're always well below 100, but that, you know, and we were increasing that, but that was getting smaller and smaller, we've talked about. So you go back to fiscal year 19. Yeah, fiscal year 19, we spent about 93, just under 94% and that was increasing. This past year, if you remember, I, remember I said our U of D, we went over by about 8,000 bucks or so, hence why it's at 101%, because we spent over that. But we have the, the built up authority to do that. This year, we're looking at that growing right now in, in the current year and we knew that, that's why we have to though, moving forward, start making some changes and preparations ahead of time. So that we don't get to a point where we're going to be forced to or we overspend. And then what Kendra was kind of allusing, alluding to earlier, as of December, just comparing the. And then what Kendra was kind of allusing, alluding to earlier, as of December, just comparing the last two years. Um, where we're at in spending our authority for the year. Overall, the annual authority and then the max authority. The thing that's tricky to figure out is prorating some of those costs from um staff. So why it's tricky is because for the most part, teachers are paid, their first paycheck is September. And then their last paycheck is August, right? So like for this school year, teachers will be paid through August, which is fine. And the next school year, it'll start in September. But those pay periods of, you know, August and July are actually in the prior fiscal year. So you have to accrue for that as an accounting term. So that's where it gets a little bit hairy in predicting that and, and calculating that and so forth and putting it in the right year. So sometimes those, it's a timing thing with their predictions, basically is the easiest way to explain it. So, questions on that for our mid-year fiscal update? Okay.
You start doing some budgeting coming up shortly.
So yes, we're going to a workshop next week on, to start it. Part of the reason we're going to that is Iowa's legislature changed it. If you remember in the years past, those that were on the board, we always had to have a, a budget hearing to present the budget to be approved in April. Okay? No one's, everyone has a rough idea of the timelines, but how this'll go, we're still working it out. You have to have two of those now. Of those, everyone does, it's not a sibyl or cheating thing, this is a state of Iowa. And the first one has to be after the county auditor sends out the total um assessed value in the county. But it has to be within, is it fifteen days of that? I can't even remember the timeline.
Yeah.
And they have to do it by March twentieth. And then we have to have it within X many days of when they've sent that out. We have to have our first one and then we have to have at least a break of, I can't remember how many days. And then our second one has to be done by April. I remember the end date for the second one, do you off the top of your head?
No, the final budget is actually due um, April thirty.
April thirty, right.
They extended that back a little bit to allow for these other things that are added, so.
In the past, we always had to move our April meeting up usually, so that it was ahead of the April fifteenth deadline, right? The reason we did that is because the budget was due the fifteenth, now that's due the thirtieth. So in theory, we'll probably have our April board meeting, the, the normal Monday. But we have to have two hearings somewhere in between, in between time. And so that's something we'll work on as a part of this process too. There's a lot of new steps that are involved this year, not just, and I'm new, but not just because of that, it's just the legislature changed some of those guidelines. And it's a lot of work for the county assessor too now, they have some additional duties they have to do. So, and mailings. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
We'll go on to the current year calendar discussion, no day.
Okay, so the, just as a reminder, our current year calendar, okay? Is us finishing on May seventeen is the last Friday. And then that following twelfth, Monday, the twentieth is when teacher in-service, okay? And I'm only pointing that out so that you see what that is, okay? Um, right now on here, we don't have any potential snow days or, or any makeup days. So any, any changes that we make or propose, and we're not doing it tonight, we're gonna discuss it here. But any changes that we propose or days we add on to the end of the year, even though they're makeup days. We have to do a um public hearing on, give community a time to respond and then we'd have to vote on that change. Because we didn't list that. I'm hoping next year to alleviate some of this, we can still have the discussion. But if we put potential days on there, then if we say, hey, we're making up two days. We don't have to have a public hearing and go through the whole process just to vote on the two days we're making up or whatever that may be. Okay, but that's part of the reason we're having this discussion. I think I shared this link out, but as of right now, we've missed four days of school. And, and if you've read email or text or whatever, we're having a two hour late start tomorrow. So I put that on here, we don't have to make up that day, but that, we have to still count things by hours. Our calendar started the year at one thousand one hundred and twenty-six. And I'm not suggesting this, I'm just pointing it out. So if we made up nothing right now, we'd still be at one thousand ninety-eight hours. Which would be eighteen hours over the minimum, because you have to have um one thousand eighty, that's your minimum, okay? I'm not saying don't make up days, I'm just pointing it out so you kind of see what that hours over minimum is. Just an i- idea of where that comes from, okay? So, we have our board policy and school day and the calendar and what Iowa code does. Um, one of the things that we'll have to do is you're required, your seniors have, you can have less than five days or thirty hours less than the rest of your school on your calendar. If we add days on to the end, we can, we can determine, and this has been done in years past, you can determine to forgive those days as well. But you just can't put that right away to start the year. So we can't make it that our seniors, right off the bat before any snow days are already ten days short of the rest. We all have children that have been seniors that probably want that to happen, but you can't start that way. They can start, start five days short, basically. And so that's on our calendar. So even if we extend that, that doesn't mean we have to extend the seniors, we could, but we don't have to. So, one of the things we're looking at that was changed for the current school year, and I think that's in the policy here that we adopted last fall. Okay, so right here, here's our school policy, um, and what we're on. The school calendar, we accommodate the education program of the district. The school calendar is for a minimum of one thousand and eighty hours and includes, but is not limited to the days of instruction. For student instruction, staff development, in-service days, teacher conferences. Each year, the minimum school calendar may include, and this is what's new, may include up to five days or thirty hours of delivered instruction over the internet. Otherwise is referred to as e-learning, okay? That did not used to be a thing. So, we have a hundred and eighty days scheduled with students. Our teaching staff has a hundred and ninety day contracts, right? That's just what most school districts do, that's pretty standard. You might see a few districts at a hundred and ninety-two, but for the most part, that's what they do. We though, report to the state by hours. And so that's sometimes where the, the rub comes from the community and things like that. So we can forgive days, we, we don't have to, but everyone's like, well, we're over our hours. But the, the choice is then, you know, we have a contract with staff, how many days are we gonna make them come back? And so that's kind of where our discussion is leading. So so far, like I said, we've missed four days. And my guess is before we're done here, we might miss one or two. So one of the things we're looking at before we would do an e-learning day, here's my view on e-learning and, and then I'll let you do your speak on it. I don't think, and I don't think any educator would disagree with this, that you're gonna get the same value out of an e-learning day as we would here with, with teachers. We know that. So then wh- why would we do that? We haven't done that yet. Well, it's when you get to the point to give us some flexibility. And you do it when you get to a case where those are days that you might have forgiven or not made up anyway. So is the idea to do some e-learning better than having done nothing? It gives you that flexibility. Case in point, we didn't do that last year and we couldn't have. But it would have been nice maybe during the year to do that, because that would have relieved some of our hours pressure at the end and having to not do PD anymore, that's where it gives you the flexibility. So what questions or thoughts do you guys have on e-learning?
So e-learning is just new for this year, right?
That it, that it's allowed that you can count the hours, yes. Yes, that is new this year.
So how would those hours count? Like if we turned, if today would have been an e-learning day, let's say.
Mm-hmm.
That counts as the six, six and a half?
Right, so the code says, and this is my take on it, you could probably take it different. You can do up to five days or thirty hours of instruction. So I view that as they're basically saying, even though we have six and a half hour days, six hours a day. Now, however we get that's up to us, it doesn't mean they're literally in that, but we could count that if we did that as an e-learning day. So we would count six hours for the day, which is, I think is what you were asking, right?
So do we have in place expectations for the teachers and for the students on those days?
Great question. Any others along with that and then I'll answer yours.
I was gonna ask um what it would look like.
Okay.
Yeah, and would kids benefit from this? Cause just from working in Worthington and having them, the Worthington School District did it when, during COVID.
Mm-hmm.
There was a lot of complaints of parents. I'm not home to teach my kids, I can't get the stuff turned in, they're not learning anything, they're falling behind. There was a lot of problems up there with that.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just like, eh, how's that, how?
Hence why I said it's.
I, I get that it would help.
Yep.
Get hours so that teachers and all that, but is it benefiting the kids at all?
So if we would do this before, this is what we've told staff to this point, before we do one. Um, we would give them warning the next, and I'm not counting today's, okay? The next snow day we'd have, we would utilize as a, as a staff professional development day. Cause they've been given some guidelines, if we go here, what we would do to get ready for that, to get ready for an e-learning day, okay? That's what we would do for the next one, if we would wanna go that route and have a number in our head. What would that, I'll let you guys answer that, what would that look like? The things that you guys have talked about with your staff, what would that look like for students? If, if we got to a day that we took an e-learning day?
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Seven twelve, uh, checking in with each class, teachers would be expected to post some type of content. Probably a recorded video themselves, um, teaching a lesson, you know, fractions, something like that. Um, and then students would have to complete something that demonstrates they watched the lesson and learned the concept that they were supposed to. And then the completion of that assignment would be attendance. So that's how kids would be reported, present or not. Uh, and I, and I was up in Worthington and I agree with what Stan said. Best is in-person, worst would be do nothing and forgive it. So this is kind of that intermediate and just trying to make it the best process it can be for kids, but it's certainly not. It doesn't replace an in-person.
So a question, if they check in, cause I know a lot of parents are saying their seven through twelve students would check in, they'd log in, leave their computer open, walk away. And, or they would just log in and think that I logged in, so my attendance counted and they would log out like within five minutes.
We.
I don't know how.
We had discussions about if they submitted the assignment, that shows they did, they did watch the lesson. That's how they would get attendance. So if you just log in, but you submit nothing.
Right.
There's no evidence that you actually watched what you're supposed to watch and do, you're supposed to do. So you could count attendance just based off of logging in too, but.
Right.
I don't, for that reason, I don't like that.
Right.
Would there be a time, like do they have to check in at a certain time or is it, as they can get to it?
Because it's posted and not a live session, it would be when they can access it. So some kids get up and help remove snow, so it might be now right away in the morning and they may have to, you know, work through lunch. And I think the idea would be, the lesson and assignment would be less than the traditional forty-five minutes to kind of accommodate some of that stuff. I think in the mornings, you would need to allow some time for staff to make the videos, post the content, so.
Would there be teachers available after the video is posted? Say the students had questions on, I can't figure this assignment out, I know that was also an issue. Coworkers of mine were complaining about in previous years at different schools, like they couldn't get ahold of the teacher. They couldn't get the, the assignment submitted because they didn't understand exactly.
Right.
You know, what was going on.
Yeah, so that'd be an expectation, seven twelve and I think.
Yeah, pre-K six or K through six, we're looking more at choice boards. Where we can try to up, so part of the teacher and staff expectation would be to keep that choice board fairly current. Wouldn't have to be a weekly uh, update to it, but it would be, you know, a couple of weeks or kind of as, as Stan talked about of, okay, so he, we're, we're, our next snow day is going to be a learn from home day. Get your choice board up to date with your um, current material that you're working on. So it reflects actual um, relevant material, not just that standard, you know what I mean? And so they, then literacy would have four options and the students could pick one. Um, to overcome some of the um, possible, I don't have internet concerns. Um, I, my computer, like K through four, we don't send computers home.
Right.
So this, this would be uh, something that would go home in the kids' folder. Um, and we would actually do that through sixth grade and then communicate the expectations. The completion of the task would be the student's attendance, they would need to turn that in by the next day. We talked a little bit about, okay, so if they don't get it done, what does that look like? Is that an unexcused absence and they can't redo it? Is that an excused absence and now they have two days for docked credit or something like that? And so we're still kind of working through some of those things and what that looks like. Um, I would love any feedback there as well. But um, the, the staff expectations would be to have those activities prepared. And the students' expectations would be to complete those activities on those days.
And then staff be available to answer questions and help families as they have them on those days, you know?
Yep. And I think to your concern with COVID, I, I taught in that.
Yeah.
We're hoping that this is not the duration of COVID.
Right, I'm just saying like there was just a lot of frustration, not, not, obviously we didn't have a lot of issues because we went to school a lot through that. So I felt really sorry for a lot of my coworkers who were so frustrated, like the moms and dads worked and they couldn't get.
Yeah.
Kids' work done, their kids were falling behind, a lot of kids had to redo things because they fell so far behind. Whether it was K through six or seven through twelve.
Yeah, any level.
And I was just, oh my gosh. Yeah, so that's, and obviously I don't hope like that comes to this, obviously.
Right.
Those are just my thoughts on.
Right, but I think it's a valid concern.
Right.
Because it's so recent.
Right.
Um, yeah. And, and we learned some through that as educators as well for the, the, the spring of twenty twenty is what worked, what didn't work. You know, some of those kind of things. And a lot of the staff has pulled from that experience and said, this would be our best implement for a day that we could use if we needed to. So that experience was valuable for us as well. Cumbersome, difficult, but valuable too.
How's that information gonna be shared with parents or have you talked about that yet? So that they kind of know or they have an idea like, okay, we have a snow day, what can I, what do I need to expect my child to do? And I think, I guess I just wanna put this out there. I think middle school on up, these kids are at an age level developmentally where they should know and be able to understand from what the teachers have told them and prepared them for this ahead of time. Like this is your expectation, these kids are, are all taking their computers home. Now there is that internet um accessibility issue. But um, they should be able to independently do those things. Fourth, probably even fourth grade, but um, elementary, that's a different story. So how, I guess my question is, how are we preparing the students to know? And then how are we going to um, inform the parents on what the protocol is gonna be?
So yeah, I heard the question about letting families know and then kind of like a, a, a student wanna let them answer that. So our thought with this would be the next, I'm not saying the next one, literal one, but we would obviously let staff know, hey, the next day, that's gonna be your work day to prepare for this, right?
Yeah.
And then once they have that prepared, whether, now, we all know how Northwest Iowa weather goes too. And if it's back to back days, I don't expect the, the students from two days ago to have their stuff, you know what I mean? That's why I say the next day after that, it's hard to predict weather, right? But ideally, we'd be back in school for a few days knowing that the next snow day would then be a potential e-learning day, right? And then we would communicate that ahead of time, hey, we are working on our next snow day will be e-learning day. So that you tell students and, and families, parents that, I should get, well, you said parents that, so that they would know that ahead of time. So that if we call school, hey, this is what they said they were gonna do tomorrow, as an example. Now the one you asked about, I remember the second half of your question.
Like just do it in middle school on up.
Oh yeah, I'll let you guys answer.
Yeah, so staff is preparing to have those conversations, to relay expectations to students to. If this is announced that uh, we're having an e-learning day or a learn from home day, or whatever you wanna call it. Um, these, this is what we expect for this class, for this grade level, those kind of things. Teachers would communicate that with their students.
Yeah. Yeah, and you, the hope would be anytime there's an anticipated one, that's reviewed. In every class period, bring your things home, this is what it would look like if we don't have school tomorrow. That'd be the expectation, the more that you hear it, the better.
So.
Does that answer some of your questions, Laura?
Yeah, yeah. We just hope it, the weather all goes south or somewhere else. Yeah, right?
It is. Other questions about that in, about the e-learning part, let's back up there. About the e-learning part that you guys have, this is just our calendar. So we have some schools in the area that are paying like us, developing this, doing this. Some that said, we're not gonna touch it till we get to X many days. We have some that are doing it now in the area in Sulane Conference. Um, one of the schools they have, they had it written in last year that every other day. So like day one was um, a traditional snow day, day two was e-learning, day three was traditional snow day. What I mean, no, when I say traditional, that, no expectations. Day four was e, e-learning. Day four was e, e-learning, so, um, and I only point that out just to say that some are doing it and some are not. Some are not, right? So that doesn't mean we're right or wrong with that, but are others doing this? And I would, I would answer that yes, in terms of the e-learning part. I guess what we'll look at, we're not gonna, to vote on tonight, but just to think about, so we got four days right now that we'll eventually have to think through, right? Because we haven't had any, um, snow days up to this point. So that you know here, the Memorial Day this year is the twenty-seventh, and I'm just pointing that out, cause it, it's a little easier to see on a full calendar here. But in our calendar, as of right, as of right now, we finish on the seventeenth, so the way it works this year, it doesn't always, but we have kind of that buffer week up until Memorial Day. So right now, the twentieth, which is a Monday, and that'd be the Monday before Memorial Day, would be the staff's last day and we're done this Friday. So we have some room in here to do some makeup days, right? And we've said this privately, I think we've, we've said this here too, but putting one day as makeup into the next week is, it's, it's, it's hard to know at the beginning, that's terrible just to come back for one day. But when you can come back for a couple of days to show that, hey, we're gonna be here the week, whether that's two, three, or four, that makes a lot more sense. Um, if, if we had one day missed on the year, I'd have a hard time saying, let's go the next week, cause that's just hard to get students period motivated for that. But if you know we have to make up X many, so that's something we'll look at, kinda keep in mind as we, as we talk about next month in February is when we'll vote on, because my guess is we'll have a better idea of how many total days that we'll need to look at and so forth. And get an idea, but just kinda keep that in mind as you're framing the, the calendar here. But what I see happening is, cause we're, well, and I'm also pointing that out, so we have, you know, your staff could come back, but we have four or five days that we can actually make up before we even get to Memorial Day, which kinda seems to be the, you know, the golden ticket, when everyone's like, oh, you can't go past Memorial Day, right? Not that we can't, but I'm just saying that's usually what you hear from community members. So that's the one thing that this year that we do have that right now in place, that we could make those four or five days up right there pretty easily and still be done by Memorial Day. Okay? Um, if we were gonna do an e-learning day, what I, like I said, we would tell staff the next snow day, which would be one, would be like a workday for them contractually, so we won't make that up with students, but we'd use that as a workday with staff that they'd use to prepare for this. And then the e-learning would be after that, so right now, we're not even to the point of saying the next day would be a e-learning day, does that make sense? I didn't explain that the best, but.
Right.
You know what I mean? So like if we, I don't even wanna joke about this, if we were, if we had to not have school Friday, that's what I mean, I don't even wanna joke about this. But if we had to not have school Friday, that, that, that won't even be an e-learning day, that could be one where we'd say potentially, hey, staff, we're using this for you guys to get ready for a potential e-learning day, if we would go that route, does that make sense what I'm saying there? Okay, and then after that, the, the question and, and why, we can discuss this, cause we don't have, it's not a vote here, is we're at four, how many days is it before we start getting into where we're gonna have that um, discussion of having staff prepare for it and then after day, after that, do an e-learning day, so that we don't have as many to tack on? And we don't have like a whole bunch of days just to forgive at the end of the year either, you know what I mean? We don't wanna come to the point preferably where we have four makeup days, staff has check out, and then we have seven other days, what to figure out what to do with. I hope we don't get to that point, but, an- anymore. And that's what the e-learning kinda does, is that flexibility, cause like what happened last year, we forgave some days, but we had to, um.
Get to our minimum hours.
Yeah, get to our minimum hours, so on Wednesdays, we went the full day and didn't do PD anymore, which I, I think that was right to get there, but it was a disadvantage, just cause we didn't have that PD and there were things that we missed out on doing and that just didn't happen, or were harder to schedule, cause we didn't have PD time. And so I, that's what some of these e-learning days is, that keeps us out of that situation, for lack of a better word there, and at the end of the year. So what, what about that whole process, do you guys have a question on?
The way I look at it, we're, we're, we are already at the.
The golden ticket.
The golden ticket. We got one more day.
Right, we could make up.
For tacking them on.
Yeah, we could, we could make up, I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm just pointing this out, we could do five, cause this has happened in other school calendars. You could do five student days and then the staff comes back to check out on the twenty-eighth, the day after Memorial Day, I mean. Did we do that last year? Or did we even have a student day after, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head. But I know where, there's been years just on the normal calendar where things fall, that's what happens. And so forth, so I mean, we do have that. And I kinda cut you off, what else were you gonna say there, Laura? What were you gonna say?
So I'm thinking, you're probably thinking like, if we, yeah, like you said, not, but let's say Friday is the snow day. You're kinda thinking, that's the day you're giving teachers.
Yeah, we're that, or we're either, it's, it's either the next one or one after that is where I'm thinking, you know what I mean? Cause we've had four already that we've had to, um, have no school on, basically, that if we made up at the end of the year, that's where they'd occur. And that was the nice thing about it, I think for me this year, being new is, we knew we had that too. So let me, let me ask it this way, get, get your feedback, cause this is the good thing, I looked into this, nothing official that we have to vote on, but I want your input on this. Um, so if we would, if we, if we would have another one, do we wanna, you know, we're at four, do we wanna wait till we get to five? And then kinda do that staff PD day, or we're at four and the next day's gonna be a staff PD day, do you, you get what I'm asking? Or do we wanna say, no, the next one's gonna be still a, a regular snow day, and then after that, if we would get to six or something like that is where we do the staff day and then start on the e-learning day? And, and we could, and it doesn't mean that once we get to that point, every day after that has to be an e-learning day too. We can, we can sprinkle in a few here and there and every other thing, just so that we're not making up every day when we start getting into those, those high numbers. What I'm really getting at is just kinda your direction and your intuition there.
I'd like adding to the wait till the next day after, or the next day after that.
So the, the next day would be the fifth day, we'd let that be a normal snow day. A snow day like we've had already, and then it'd be if we get to number six, that's where we do our first time for staff to get prepared for an e-learning day, is that what I'm hearing you?
That's right.
So then the seventh day would be the e-learning day then?
Potentially, yeah. And I only say potentially because like we had last week, you know, you know, the two days in a row off. It'd be kinda hard to do if staff prepared day one and then all of a sudden we couldn't come back.
And it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to do it on the next one, in my opinion, to do the fifth one, and that way you're prepared, you're ready to go.
Mm-hmm. Could do, we could do that too.
And that can be considered a teacher work day.
Mm-hmm. I would recommend doing that, yes, cause we're asking.
If Memorial Day is the golden ticket for the community and parents, how do the teachers feel about that? Do they like to be done by then versus coming back after? I guess I look at it that way too, then we might as well.
I think.
Limit one day sooner than.
If they're gonna be honest, no one's gonna say, oh, I don't mind going after Memorial Day, they'd like to be done before then as well. Right? I mean.
I'm just looking at the staff.
I, you're, you're right, I do know, I mean, I've had staff say this, no one likes it, but they would rather come back for a work day or a, a, um, a professional development day or a teacher day after Memorial Day and be done versus coming, yeah, coming back for one or two days with students too, and, and I only say that, I'm not saying everyone's on board with that, but having been there myself too, I, I'll come back for a PD day, but to come back for one day, you'd rather come back for two or three student days, cause one day is tough. And you come back after a weekend at, at that time of year, that's hard.
Well, and I think that's why Stan shared the hours spreadsheet as well, just to kinda get that whole picture. You know, we are over that minimum, school of the hundred eighty days is important, but.
Well, we'd rather do the e-learning days than forgive days, I guess.
For sure.
So.
And yeah, and, and we can forgive some too, that's nothing against that, but that takes, if we, if we go that route, that takes board action as well. Just from a contractual standpoint. And the other thing to consider with this, cause I've had people ask, is right now, okay, let's say we make, we have no other days and we make these four up, we're good, but like every day we don't have school, um, our certified staff, like our paras and kitchen and support staff, those that get an hourly wage, aren't getting paid, right? And so if we make those up at the end of the year, yeah, the timing sucks, but at least if we're, if we're back in school, they'll have those days for work as well. I mean, this is a part of it, it's not the whole answer, but they, they get that, but you know, when we, when we forgive them, they don't have that opportunity either. So I'm kinda summarizing maybe, and that's what's hard about this, is you never know that the timing of when these days will happen, or if it's multiple days, or is it one day? But, um, one of these next days, depending on the timing here, is we would do, is our staff prep, right? Okay, and then ideally, it wouldn't be maybe till we get to that, um, that sixth or seventh day that we'd use it as, as a, uh, student e-learning day. Would that be fair to say what everyone's on board for? We're not gonna do a student e-learning day before we've missed five days, cause we have the opportunity to put those on at the end of the year, right? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, and whether that's, whether I wait till day five or day six for the staff part, it's, yeah, it's gonna be hard to predict, but I, we probably won't do a student e-learning day till we've had five days that we have to make up. You know, so really probably till the seventh day, cause one of those days in there would be a staff day to, to plan for the e-learning, but is everyone kinda comfortable with that? It, it might not play out perfectly, cause you never know how the, the days are gonna fall, whether you have one day or two or three in a row or something like that, but that gives me at least a guideline to go by, and that's why I said, doing this when I was looking at this emotion, and I was asking some others, cause they say you, you can't predict what'll happen with that, but if we have a guideline to go by, then I'll know that. And hopefully by February, we'll have an idea at least where we're at, and at a minimum know some of these days that we're gonna make up, that we'll propose to put on at the end of the year then on the calendar. Did I misspeak, or is everyone good with that? Okay? That's all, that's what we needed.
Okay, moving on to new business.
All right, so the return to learn plan, basically the main reason it needs to be reviewed and it's supposed to be reviewed every six months um, is so that we can continue as part of the regulations for ESER, continue to receive ESER fundings. Yes, we did in October, but there was an error there that was updated, so actually, we're supposed to do it, um, twice a year, January and June.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the return to learn plan.
Make a motion to approve the plan as presented.
Okay, all on paper?
Aye.
Move on to the HVAC service.
So last year, this was agreed upon, it was a, a three-year agreement, but it's supposed to be, um, technically reviewed annually. The person that wrote the quote no longer works there, Mr. J, Mr. Craig was the one that signed it, and obviously, he's not here anymore, so when we, when we called them, we, Greg and I, when I say we were looking into this, they were gonna honor, um, the three-year commitment, but they said it'd be good to present that, so i- if you looked on the sheet, that's why there's a three-year quote in it, we're in year two of that, and it went up one percent, and so the fee would be the fourteen thousand four hundred and two dollars for the upcoming school year.
Um, is there a motion, and do they need to read it with those dollar amount, that dollar?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the HVAC service plan provided by Climate Systems for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and two.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Okay. Um, continuation of board approved PEPAL.
So the PEPAL is the, PEPAL is the properly, property, plant and equipment levy, and there's a voter-approved portion that they vote on, which in the next year or two, we're gonna have to redo again, and then there's a board-approved part, and so tonight, you are voting to continue using the board-approved portion of the property, plant and equipment levy, and that has to be done annually.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the board-approved PEPAL as presented.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passed. Consider approval of fund transfer.
When the, um, as it says here, the state of Iowa sends us the income cert, income cert tax revenue for the voted PEPAL and the instructional support levy, which we, um, had renewed this summer and fall, they send the money to our general account and then they tell us the amount we need to do a transfer for those dollars out of the general fund and into the PEPAL amount, and it needs to be, the motion will need to be read exactly like it is to the cent, and then we can move that into the PEPAL account.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to approve the fund transfer from general fund to PEPAL of one hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Passed. Approval of new contracts?
So we have a variety of new contracts to approve here. Um, a lot of this, I'm gonna thank these guys, they've done a lot of work on getting going on some of this, Amy Elsa as well, for some of these coaching positions. And there'll be more coming up the next month. I'm gonna jump down, the only two I'm gonna comment on are McKenzie and Quentin, and some of that's on, on me here. Um, at the beginning of the year, Casey had mentioned, and, and I'm piggybacking what Laura asked earlier about starting potentially the robotics club and with um, the advisors, and it be sponsored through some grants and things like that. And sometimes I have conversations enough and I forget, I just thought we had presented her being the advisor and looking back, we talked about it, but we never did. So McKenzie Brockius is the advisor, this will not be on our salary schedule, cause as of right now, the stipend's paid through the grant, but we still have to prove that. And then Quentin, our, um, high school custodian, um, is really good with some of that technical stuff and been helping out, so we would ask that he would be as the assistant. And then he would get paid through that stipend as well.
That grant is for one year?
Should cover us for two.
And then there's the potential sometimes to earn and get some more grant money, whether we will or not, but there's a lot of, this program has a lot of grant money and things that are supplied, so hopefully, we'll continue to receive some funds for that.
Hoping for some local sponsorships too, that's kinda the plan, once the season's done, bring the robot around and try to get some local businesses to sponsor the team.
Okay, do I have a motion? Is it approved?
Oh, go ahead.
So, okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, okay, motion is carried.
Okay, so I broke these out, so this wasn't gonna be, it, it is confusing, but hopefully less confusing than, um, doing this all together, so I tried to make this as simple with the amount of policies, so why there's a ton of policies on here. Um, the short version is we, as Laurel, Jennifer and myself, we're just gonna review the six hundred series. As that came out, we got an update on policies from IASB. And so that added to the confusion of this, and some of these were in the six hundreds, and then since Laurel and Jennifer and I myself met, they sent out another update, cause they had an error, which I'll explain later on one of their policies that was caught, um, a clerical error and so forth, and then I also had to review our wellness policy with Ashley and Carla, so there's a variety of things on here, so I'll try and, that's kinda the summary of all these next points, and I'll summarize them as we go here, so the first is you already in the consent agenda approved the sick, a reading of the six hundred series with no changes. These were the policies within the. These were the policies within the six hundred series that in reading through I or those together had recommended. So for instance, and they're not big changes here in this first one, as you can see, before it left a blank and it didn't list the policy number, so it's just cross-referencing this to policy six oh five. Once again, this is cross-referencing to our policy for graduation requirements, so that you can see that in there, policy five oh five point oh five. This one was simply deleting the Iowa Learning Online, that's not a thing anymore, and I don't think that's been a thing for five or six years, to be honest. And so that's why that was removed. And then this one here is what will hopefully be a help to Mister DeZale here and then what Mister Weersma alluded to as part of our curriculum, it just specifically in the policy looks up and lists our rotation between the various departments, so that we don't have to continually search and go, who's up next? Because when people leave, that's kinda what happens. So the short version of this is, we knew two years ago in Kent's first year, he's our curriculum director replacing Mister Genus, he told us science is up next year. Great, so we worked on science. Well, then our question was, who's the next year? And we've been asking that for the last year and finally found that. And so I'm putting that in the policy, so that if something happens, we can see that right here. And that's no different than before, other than it's listed in policy. So those would be the changes recommended to the six hundred series by the committee.
And we'll have to say those numbers when we make that motion.
And if approved, I would recommend it as well, um, waiving the second reading on those, since those are minor changes.
Okay, so first.
I make a move, motion to approve the first reading of board policies with changes and skipping the second reading of the six hundred series. Six hundred oh two point oh two, six oh three point oh one, six oh four point one, and six oh five point oh one.
Is there a second? Any second? Okay. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one is carried.
So this is the recommended changes that came from IASB. And I kind of highlighted from their correspondence in here, that summarized the changes and we went over these as a, um, policy committee. I added on the bottom when I said there was a correction after Laurel, Jennifer and I met, and then I included that as a separate attachment. It was basically, they put an incorrect, um, definition on one, in one of their policies. And so I put it on here as an example. They have this red one changed and that was actually the incorrect policy, or excuse me, the incorrect definition, so I deleted it and in light blue updated what the correct definition is. They actually put debt service in there twice. And so that was a mistake, a clerical error that was caught. And so that's a change that Laurel and Jennifer didn't see, I'm just letting you know. The rest are on there as listed.
Is there a motion, uh, to approve the first reading with changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of board policies with changes reviewed, four oh one point one three, four oh one point one three R one, four oh one point one three E one, I'll become seven one three, five oh two point oh seven, six oh five point oh six, six oh five point oh eight, six oh five point oh eight R one, seven oh one point oh one, seven oh one point oh two, seven oh one point oh three, seven oh one point oh four, and seven oh three point oh one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Is that aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one is carried.
The next one is one that was presented and we're adding it to, it's, it's dealing with the student discipline policy and basically in talking with our principals and so forth, um, we kinda held off the recommendation and then got this guidance, and I think I originally saw it from Steve Avery and somewhere else and thought that it best fit our needs, so it's a regulation, so it's an additional, in addition to five oh three oh eight.
Is there a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of new board policy, five oh three point oh eight R one.
Second. No second? Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one is carried.
And this one is part of the packet, but I pulled it out to separate it. Policy seven oh three oh two, it can be rescinded, the wording of it is getting moved into policy seven oh three oh one, therefore it's not needed.
Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion of the first reading of board policies to rescind seven oh three point oh two.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. And another one?
So this next one was, there was a recommended change from IASB in reading it over and talking with Laurel and Jennifer on this one. This regulation, actually, I thought ours was more in-depth and Tony had developed it a few years ago and was better written than the IASB one, so we recommend not um, approving the IASB update and leave ours as is.
Okay, is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion for the first reading of board policies with no changes reviewed at six oh five point oh six R one.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried.
And then the final one is our wellness policy in the five hundreds, the five oh seven oh nine, and then the regulation that went with it. It's required to be reviewed at least every three years. Traditionally, it's supposed to be done by the school nurse, the head of food service and myself as, at a minimum. Um, neither one of those have been through that, so we went through that, even though it had been approved within the last three years, it wasn't approved by that party, so we did that and recommended five oh seven oh nine, we didn't have any changes, but the regulation. We made some updates, cause there are things that were listed on there that aren't happening anymore. Of course, now the computer's going slow here. There we go. And there were things that, um, this is the oh nine one. Oh, and the regulation didn't attach, I apologize, I'll pull that up, up here, I thought it did. Is it on there?
Yeah.
I think you have to scroll down.
Yeah.
I don't know if all your pages loaded right away.
Oh, okay, I was like, I thought I put this on here, my bad. So on the regulation part, the policy, the only, I, I should say, the only change we made was so that it says school website under the services, but we didn't make any content changes. On the regulation, basically, we're required to at least have one goal in those areas, we've had two, and some of the things offered don't make sense, so when I read this first bullet point, it's offered at each grade level, it's talking about a nutrition program. It's offered at each grade level as part of a sequential, comprehensive, standards-based program designed to provide students with the knowledge and skills necessary. That's a description for like our reading and science curriculum, not our nutrition curriculum. We're not doing that at each grade level. So it doesn't make sense to put that in there if we're not doing that. And some of the other things in, in talking about, uh, a program that, you know, we talk about fruits and vegetables, but about healthy food preparation and enhancing student nutrition practices, we don't work on food preparation with students in general unless they're in a class, so we don't do that overall. And then, um, adding the nutrition posters and so forth on that item. We don't do trains with teachers and staff on how to prepare food either, so we're not listing that on there, we're trying to be realistic. And then on the bottom, talking about our nutrition website, the nutrition nuggets newsletter is not a thing anymore. We don't do that. Some of you might remember turn up, turn up the heat. Ashley and Carla knew that was, I didn't, that's not a thing. And then going down and do things with the rec bowl, obviously that's not, you know, bowling with the rec department is not gonna happen anymore. Um, and we added some things that we do recently, like the jump, the jump rope for the Healthy Hearts, the Healthiest State Initiative, those are things we do. The Iowa Star Wellness Program screenings, they don't have that as, when I contacted them on that. We do try and do each year a health or wellness program, authoring through our insurance carrier when provided. And then Ashley tries to do something annually as a wellness challenger game here locally, so we tried to update that to things that are actually being done.
Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the wellness policy. Five oh seven point oh nine and five oh seven point oh nine R one. And also recommend to waive the second reading of this policy.
Is there a second? Discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. And we are at our next meetings.
So remember, our next meeting is on, I think that's a Tuesday, the thirteenth, I believe, without pulling up my calendar, the eighteenth and then the fifteenth, those are the normal school board meetings. Um, as of right now, I don't think we'll have to move the April one, but we'll find out and let you know ahead of time if we do. And, and I said to this earlier with the budget process and that timeline and the legal requirements this year, we'll need to have two meetings, um, in later margin, early April for budget hearings, we have to have two separate hearings for the budget.
All right. Talking points? Does anybody have any highlights from tonight's meeting that we'll talk about?
Literacy calls was, uh, Mister Weersman is always good, he's always gonna say, you can tell he's into that subject and into the kids. Good job. It was good to go over the, um, the budget things that we get every month, to see everything again, to go over what is actually there.
And I just liked even on Mister Weersman and like in these guys' reports, and hopefully you're hearing some words, not that you remember them all, but you know, he even talked about focusing on his PD goes, the MTS process. That is his goal, and they, they mentioned that a few times in theirs report, so hopefully, even if you don't fully get how that ties together, you start hearing those things and like, oh, staff are working on that, or, oh, I've heard that term, MTSS, I've heard PD, I've heard APL, you know, cause he talked about, um, how he runs class and some of his APL strategies even on his presentation, and I didn't tell him to do that, he just did that, so I thought that was pretty cool.
Anything else? Okay, with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.
All right. Thank you, everyone.